I'm Spark the Unicorn with stealthy, witty, and zealous unicorns. This is different from an AMA. First, Aaron will start by talking about liquidity. Together, we'll frame the problems that we want to solve and answer questions from the community. We would also love to hear your input. Without further ado, let's listen to Aaron. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. I mean, let's get right to it. Obviously, we have been thinking through our LP program. I'm getting a little background from you, Stealthy. You're unmuted. Thanks. So we've been thinking through the LP program. Obviously, we have planned to provide one. And so I'd like to kind of go through my current thinking on that front, as well as solicit a few questions, or ask a few questions that I would be very interested in hearing people come up and give their thoughts and feedback on. So the current plan right now is to launch the LP program the week of the 4th of April, so effectively the week prior to game launch. We will be, of course, offering RBW rewards for people willing to time-lock their LP. So very similar to single-side staking. You know, you're going to be presented between 1 and 12 months, and obviously, higher rewards tied to willingness, right, to stake over longer periods of time, which I think is pretty natural just generally because you obviously take on increased IL or impermanent loss risk the longer you're in a pool. And I do think it's a natural thing to boost the rewards and orient the rewards towards those willing to stake over longer periods of time. My first big question, just generally for the audience, is a preference around RBW-USDC as a pair versus RBW and say wrapped ETH or wrapped Matic? I'd be very curious to hear from people if there is a preference on that front. It's something we continue to actively discuss internally. In addition to the RBW rewards, which will function very similarly to single-side staking, which is currently ongoing, we're also going to have an LP rewards leaderboard, which will include UNIM and RBW payouts per month, as well as an end-of-year bonus. So very similar structure to what you see with the single-side RBW pool. Initially, what we're looking to target is about 10 million in liquidity on top of the roughly 10 million in liquidity that we already have against the RBW-USDC pool. And that's kind of the initial plan. And again, over time, I think it's very important to grow liquidity as we grow as an economy. But I want to avoid, you know, unnecessary spikes upward or downward. I don't view those as necessarily being very good. And then the other thing that we're actively considering is providing rewards for UNIM, the UNIM-USDC pair, and those willing to lock up their LP tokens on that front. I think those rewards will be based again on a time-lock and oriented again towards those willing to lock up their LP tokens over longer time horizons. And I should note that this is all going to be via Balancer. You know, unfortunately, Uniswap V3 is not supported, given, you know, those are not ERC20 LP tokens. They're actually NFTs, and our staking dashboard does not support NFT staking right now. So all of this will be through Balancer and leveraged traditional LP token staking. So I'll stop there. We wanted to kind of make this a working session with the with the community. So I'm very interested in kind of hearing thoughts and feedback, as well as answering some of the questions that came up in the AMA questions. And again, I would very much like to hear preferences around RBW-USDC versus RBW and say wrapped ETH. They have different pluses and minuses and potential trade-offs from an LP perspective. And I'd be very, very interested to hear feedback from the community on a preference, what preference you might have.
All right. So now the floor is open. If you would like to say something on voice, please press or request the speak button. The button looks like a raised hand. You can try pressing it right now. And you can queue up even while somebody's talking. Once we accept your request, you'll see a green bar at the top of your Discord, and you need to click Accept to begin speaking. You will pick people one by one, so everybody has a chance to ask something or to say something. And once you're admitted, feel free to ask your question. We also do have some questions for people who couldn't make it but wanted to ask a question related to liquidity. We'll get to those as well. But for now, we have Rubik. Hey, Rubik.
Good morning, everybody.
Hey.
Big day. Wouldn't a USDC be more stable, so therefore be less impermanent loss? I don't know. Liquidity pulls on. I've only done one before, so I'm not really fully but I sort of understand impermanent loss. And I was understanding that the more stable the coin, the less impermanent loss. Is that right? If that's the case, would USDC be better?
So the challenge with impermanent loss, the best way I've found to think about it is when you enter a pool, over whatever period of time you remain in that pool, right? When you enter, you put in an equal amount of value of either token, right? And over that period of time, let's just say it's a month, you actually will earn more of the worst-performing token, right? So if it's RBW against USDC and RBW runs up 50%, you're basically missing out on half of the upside that you would have captured had you just been in RBW, right? And, you know, the reality is, of course, you are stacking more USDC into your position. And so it's not necessarily a, you know, not necessarily a bad thing. But, you know, in a strong RBW dip, you would have more RBW and less USDC. So it's definitely not true that you're going to have like less impermanent loss because there's a stable in the pair, right? It is very dependent on how much the price of RBW moves. And with a stable, you're, obviously, we hope USDC de-pegging would obviously be a disaster kind of across the board in the crypto space, right? So we would hope it doesn't de-peg. With RBW wrapped ETH, you have to start to think, well, you know, both of those pairs could run up in, you know, a bull market and run down in kind of a bear market. And if they move at roughly the same rate, you know, your impermanent loss actually ends up being less, if that makes sense. If, you know, ETH spikes up or RBW spikes up really significantly relative to the price movement of the other pair, it ends up, you know, you would, you would have impermanent loss. And that's really the struggle with it in crafting this program. As I've spent years now, really since 2017, doing a lot of liquidity providing across a ton of pairs. It's really very hard to, you know, from just a fees and rewards perspective, ensure that, you know, you can cover your ass from the perspective of impermanent loss. And I feel like a lot of projects don't do a good enough job of educating the community on the potential risks. And also kind of try to throw way too many rewards at LP providers, which gets dangerous. You start to attract very mercenary capital that again, doesn't have any interest in actually participating in the, you know, the real economy of the protocol of the network. And that can also be very dangerous. Rubik, did I answer your question as far as like the concern around impermanent loss relative to a stable pair? It's very much a factor of how the price of the tokens move while you're locked up.
Hey, Rubik, still there? Okay, while Rubik is fixing his mic, let's have Martin.
Hey, yeah, I just wanted to say like, I'd rather have wrapped ETH and RBW as the pair because I want either of those assets. And, you know, if I suffer impermanent loss towards wrapped ETH, then I can buy more unicorns on OpenSea. If I get more RBW, then, you know, I have more stuff that I can buy in the game. So I just wanted to voice that.
Yeah, I'm very interested to hear more opinions that either agree with your statement there or oppose it. I think I'm generally kind of leaning towards RBW and wrapped ETH because I, you know, believe in both those assets long-term. And you're absolutely right. You know, on one side of that trade, you end up with more wrapped ETH that can be very useful in a number of different ways. And, you know, on the other side, you end up with more RBW to spend in the game. So, you know, on the USDC front, you're always going to kind of be, well, again, you know, RBW either runs up or down relative to a stable coin, right? So thank you for that opinion. Any other, any other questions while you're up here?
I guess what would you like, kind of think that the rates would be in terms of the rewards? If you're locking up for three months, six months, 12 months? I know it's like a variable equation, but what are you kind of expecting it to level out at?
I mean, you're going to see it somewhere in the range of what the single-side staking is going to be. And of course, again, it's very, very dependent on, ultimately, how many people do provide liquidity, right? Against the amount of rewards that we're providing. But our modeling, we're trying to line it up relatively close. I really disagree with programs that throw really insane incentives towards LP providers. I think, again, that attracts the wrong kind of LPs. We're going to be very, very mercenary. I would rather grow liquidity a little slower and more in tandem with our growth as a network versus trying to heavily incentivize liquidity at the beginning. And again, I think it's just trying to take a multi-year approach to how do we build something that, you know, is more long-term and sustainable than it would be, you know, versus just wholesale dumping massive amounts of rewards and overly inflating the supply of RBW early on.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I totally agree with your, your thinking there. I appreciate you answering my questions.
I have one more question for you while you're up here. So you voiced a preference for RBW wrapped ETH as kind of the, the pair. What about UNIM?
Ah, that's, I guess I would like UNIM too. I mean, obviously, there's so much utility for it in the game. So, yeah, I think that'd be, be great as well. But generally speaking, I just would rather keep RBW and USDC as the pair on, on Balancer and then use the in-game assets for, for the liquidity pairs. So that way, you know, if you suffer impermanent loss either direction, then you can use those assets in the game.
Interesting. No, I appreciate that. It's helpful feedback.
Yeah, of course. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Martin. Next up, we have Swiss. Come on over, Swiss. Hello? You are on mute, by the way.
Sorry, guys. So I'm not an expert at this topic at all, but my question is the following. So if you do the pair against ETH or wrapped ETH, you will automatically expose yourself to the overall market situation. Should ETH go to 10K in the future? The other part of the pair will definitely benefit from that move up. But that also is true in the other direction. And would it make sense to have both options? And then let the community decide where they want to shift over the focus in tandem with their belief of where the overall market is going? This is just a very general idea. I'm not sure if this is making sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly possible for us to provide rewards across several pools and several pairs. And, you know, ultimately, yeah, let people kind of vote. I mean, obviously, you know, ETH does run up to 10K, and I'm one of the people that believes that does happen over the next several years. You know, you would experience impermanent loss, right? Because you would have more RBW at that point than you started with and less ETH than you originally put into the pool. And that's kind of the dangerous part if you're taking really long-term or wanting to take really long-term bets on, you know, the underlying protocol assets, right? And that's where it gets a little tricky in my mind. Against a stable pair, it's just a little bit more predictable, right? And again, it, it kind of is like, what would you rather have more of on a five- or 10-year time horizon, right? And again, something that, you know, is difficult. And it really depends on an individual's trade strategy. Like, when I look at liquidity in these, in these kind of game economies and things, you know, it's really just meant to provide the ability for, you know, new entrants and new participants in the economy to get access to the tokens that they need to participate and allow, you know, peer-to-peer trading and things of that nature. And so I'm trying to structure a program that's like reasonable, that doesn't attract the more mercenary, you know, liquidity providers. Like, it would be a really bad thing if a large chunk of the LPs, in my mind, were not playing the game and were simply farming and dumping. And the question is, how do you kind of avoid that? And I know some people have indicated that there's this expectation that the rewards being dumped on LP should be higher than the single-staking reward. And I really actually disagree with that principle. I think you really want to incentivize the single-stake side, which is directly tied to governance, and make that a really attractive option if you're looking to compound your return off of the LP side. So something that I think is very easy for us to set up is multiple pools. I certainly don't have any issue with that, and it would let people effectively vote based on where they want to place their LP. And so that's absolutely possible, and I think an idea that, that we're going to consider big time.
Does that answer your question, Swiss?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, it wasn't really a question. I'm experimenting with liquidity on Uniswap using the UNIM pair. And it is quite an interesting dynamic there. And I'm just curious how this whole, I mean, in the end of the day, I think the important part is that if people, if people are coming to make a little bit of money, enjoy the game, have a good time, and from time to time, they want to withdraw some of the money they make to reallocate it or to do whatever they want with it. And this is the primary function of the liquidity pool, to get out of the game when you want to and get back into it when you want to. And everything else is a potential decision.
Yes, it provides a permissionless way for people to enter and exit the economy, right? It is the on-ramp to our collective economy. And it needs to have enough liquidity to support that. I think in some ways, you can get overweight and it, it becomes a, you know, potentially a negative. And that just gets to the point where slippage, you know, if you can dump a million box under 2% slippage, you know, there becomes kind of an easy, more frictionless exit ramp for larger holders. And I think that can get dangerous in some ways. You almost want to penalize that in some ways. And you, one way to do that is slippage on trades. And of course, we have a plan around listing on centralized exchanges, right? And so the community, I think, should also consider the idea that like, this is not going to be, you know, the exclusive, you know, mechanism for buying and selling, you know, RBW, certainly, right? UNIM probably stays off the centralized exchanges, but RBW certainly. And we're actively in convo with a series of the centralized exchanges that everyone would be, you know, familiar with. Thank you for the, the thoughts of Swiss.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Swiss. We don't have anybody requesting to speak for right now, but we do have non-linear in AMA questions, liquidity questions for now. Bancor V3 has protection that gets triggered from the seventh thing of providing liquidity. Unfortunately, it doesn't run on Polygon, but you could create RBW and UNIM tokens that are wrapped on ETH in order to use Bancor V3 for LP. How do you feel about that, Eric?
Shout out to whoever asked that question again, because, yeah, you know, it's one of the reasons I chose Bancor over Sushi Swap and Quick Swap in particular. I mean, obviously, Uniswap on Polygon is relatively new relative to those other DEXs. I'm a huge fan of the Bancor team. They continue to innovate. They're one of the OGs in the space. Doing the bridge and wrapping things is a very interesting idea, but I think I would be resistant to that versus just making the request to the Balancer team that, you know, they add that functionality on Polygon. Like, I see that as probably being the more likely route over time. I would be excited to see something like that. But again, I think the complexity of bridging and having to wrap and trade those assets on ETH mainnet takes away a lot of the advantage that, that the Bancor kind of V3 or the Balancer V3 stuff does. So I would say let's wait on the team to add that functionality to Polygon.
All right. Thank you so much. Non-linear says thanks in the form of emojis. So something else for the question from before. Little Blue Penguin says, if you have multiple pools that also splits resources, will there be enough demand to support both at the same time? Or will we face the ban?
Well, it'd be kind of interesting because I think the way it would work out, you know, the pools that had, we would take the number of rewards. I mean, that is the one risk, is it would... We could treat all LP tokens equally, times their time-lock across all pools and distribute rewards like that. And, you know, that would be better, I think, than splitting out the amount of rewards we plan to give out. And just, you know, let's say we had three pools dividing that by three, because then you would have this challenge and like the lower liquidity pools would have higher APY up until the point that they equalized with the remainder of the pools. And that is the challenge, I think, ultimately, is there's certainly advantages to liquidity depth up to a certain point, like I mentioned. And if we support multiple pools, each pool will be smaller and have higher slippage as a result. And that would be the disadvantage versus just saying as a community, hey, we really want to support the RBW, like wrapped ETH pair. And I think it would probably be great, I'll chat obviously with, with the CM team and stuff, but we'll definitely plan to run a poll the next week or two and just kind of see where, you know, what the general sentiment is around, you know, around these LP pools. But yeah, that is the disadvantage, is you would kind of be splitting out the liquidity, you know, as well as the rewards. So the question was more oriented towards the reward portion. I'm thinking more on the liquidity side, and there is a disadvantage to splitting it out amongst pools. Another thing to consider for sure as we debate, you know, pairing it against a stable coin versus pairing it against something like wrapped ETH.
Definitely. Okay, so if you would, if anybody else would like to say something on voice, please press the request to speak button. So the button looks like a raised hand. But for now, we don't have any requests, so let's have another. Okay, we have an opinion from Mia Wallace. Not a question, but I prefer RBW-USDC as the LP pair. As GameFi develops more, there are more and more people who are interested in blockchain gaming as a concept and don't necessarily want extra exposure to ecosystem coins.
I mean, that's the other side of it. You know, it's hard to deny that point as well. And it's a good point to call out in that more people entering now are not necessarily the crypto natives. So I do try and get my own biases out of the way because I would certainly be biased towards RBW wrapped ETH, but I'm already, you know, five years into my journey and a believer in that side. And so again, yes, I could totally see that. It's a very, very valid point. Easier to think through not having to worry about one of the token pairs' price movement as you enter and exit these positions. So again, that's a valid point and something I think we as a community do need to think through. Because it is very much about kind of attracting the next chunk of players, you know, the crypto-native crowd while, even with the market down, you know, everybody's kind of up still. A limited set, set of people relative to the rest of the world, right? So, yeah, that's a very valid point to consider.
All right. We have a question from C Brown. When the game launches, will the staking and LP experiences become embedded into the game similar to DeFi Kingdoms? Or will those experiences remain on their own dedicated webpages?
So those will remain on the dedicated webpages? You know, DeFi Kingdoms is a very interesting project. I, you know, they very much focused on building a DEX, right? A decentralized exchange. It took me a while to figure that out. And you're like, it is a very interesting way to bootstrap an exchange and give LP providers effectively a game, a little mini-game to play. In some ways, that may ultimately just be a distraction from all the impermanent loss that they're potentially taking in. If you think about the price movement of Jewel, because Jewel is the pair in that DEX, as Jewel ran up, everybody is happy because you're gaining more of the other side of that, even though you're getting impermanent loss on your Jewel. And then, of course, as Jewel has gone downward, well, you're getting more and more Jewel against that other asset. And in, you know, when they, in the case where the other asset is stable coin or ETH or whatever, versus a, you know, a highly risky kind of game token, that's, that's a little scary there. So, you know, we plan to keep LP staking as a part of the kind of web experience because we obviously have kind of like a fully-fledged gaming experience. And I want to kind of keep those two things somewhat separate.
Okay, understandable. We have another suggestion from NonLinear. For discouraging predatory capital, couldn't the LP rewards be provided as in-game non-transferable assets instead?
I think the time-lock will help to prevent predatory because you are taking on risk and we're forcing a lock on those assets. And I think that is a better way than the scheme around, hey, this is, you know, only usable in-game. Now, if you made it truly non-transferable, not how Alouvium did it, where Alouvium said, oh, this is only useful in-game, but it happened to be an ERC20 token and you can do whatever the hell you want with an ERC20 token. And I believe they did that intentionally. It's a good idea, but I think the time-lock will, will help on that point. And again, I think making sure that we don't have kind of ridiculous unsustainable APYs will avoid the more predatory players in the space. And again, forcing the time-lock and orienting the rewards towards the longer-term time-lock does help us, I think, relative to a lot of projects where you can un-stake your LP tokens at any time and, you know, and dump.
So what I think is, there's a lot of people in the audience right now, and some members of the community probably want to do more research into liquidity pools so they can form an educated opinion, you know, before getting on the stage and asking questions. Can you tell us what specifically you want people to look into? Or if you have a suggested video or article that explains liquidity pools in a more digestible way?
I can definitely dig up some of my, some articles from my archive, my crypto archive. So happy to kind of share those around. I mean, I wanted to kind of not just throw out the program and say, here's, you know, what we're doing. I wanted to solicit feedback from the community as we structure and kind of finalize it. Obviously, with Governance launching very soon, if there are modifications and suggestions to the program, I mean, that's the beauty of this space. Put a proposal together in the forum, and we'll get that up, you know, for, for vote after it kind of hits consensus or, excuse me, a quorum. And so my big thing is considering whether, you know, we should do one pool or multiple pools, whether we should do RBW paired with USDC or RBW paired with wrapped ETH. I think those are big decisions that we kind of have to make early on, and there's pluses and minuses relative to that. And then the UNIM kind of USDC side of things, again, I'm looking at providing UNIM rewards on top of that. We can do that very easily within our staking dashboard system. And, yeah, I'd be curious if anyone really would want UNIM paired against anything except USDC. I think in the case of UNIM being a commodity currency, you know, it, it makes a lot more sense to pair it against a stable than, than pairing it against a crypto asset like wrapped ETH. So, yeah, the, the pairing against stables versus a crypto asset, you know, having multiple pools versus... versus just trying to aggregate liquidity into one pool. Those are the things I'm very interested in in getting feedback from the community on for sure.
Alright, yeah, I'm sure we'll hear a lot of this in general, and people are discussing it right now too. Uh oh, I have another question from Tice. So this is uh the LP versus RBW staking. So he's asking if the APR of liquidity mining is much greater than RBW staking, it's not fair to those who've been staking for one year in the early stage, but if there's less, it won't attract people to add liquidity. How do you plan to balance this?
The short answer is it will be relatively close and not greater than. That's just the reality of it. I know that there are other programs that not programs, other games and stuff that have thrown really hefty incentives towards the LP positions. Again, I think that is a, you know, that is a mistake, and I think our time lock system will help uh on that front and orient uh the rewards towards the people that take the longer time preference, which of course does come with increased risk. So I think we can do a better job there than just dumping the same amount of rewards on LP tokens per rata. Um and again, the single side staking is very important because we actually have governance, right? I mean, it is the core of um how we intend to evolve and build the protocols through through governance, through active community governance. And so that incentive, I think, should be higher than the LP side and act as a way for you as an LP to compound your return and get additional votes on the governance side. Again, in in a protocol that you believe in. I mean, if we're on our way to building a Pokemon over the next ten, you know, ten years, right? Like, I want to set up incentives that are focused on that rather than providing the community um. Uh again, this kind of conduit to both enter and exit the economy. It's important. We need enough liquidity to facilitate that. Too much liquidity, I think, is actually a bad thing too early on and trying to kind of balance that is uh is of critical importance for us as a, as a group.
Alright, uh so we have Abdo up on the stage. Would you like to ask a question, Abdo? You're on mute, by the way. Abdo, can you hear us? Oh, I think he's having problems with his. Oh, there.
Uh I literally just hopped in my car and it automatically pairs, so.
Oh.
No, I just, I just wanted to say um in general, that uh that kind of explains uh like yield farming and liquidity pools and um that YouTube channel has a lot of great resources for like explaining and to visualize everything about that.
Thank you for providing that. I mean, it's not, it's a very complex topic that people really should understand if they're planning to provide liquidity. And I look at it as you are providing a service to the community, which again is this enter and exit ramp for people to join and leave our economy. And the rewards that we're putting forward are a way to obviously reward you for a real service that you're doing to the community as well as help mitigate some of the risks associated with things like impermanent loss. And then again, the hope is we're building a long-term, sustainable game economy here in which the tokens will hold um you know, some form of value uh indefinitely as, you know, people continue to on-ramp into the experience and utilize all this stuff. And if it all works well, um you know, we we should be in a really good position. But people do need to understand the risk and the reward of entering into these positions. And so um yeah, I I I will be sharing additional material uh that people can dig into and uh certainly happy to answer questions in the AMA on Thursday and as we kind of proceed forward with announcing plans next week and then implementing things on the week of the fourteenth, or excuse me, the week of the fourth.
Alright. Oh, we do have a question from Prohempers. Would you be okay with doing a quick explain like I'm five on LPs? That sounds kind of hard. Are you up for it, Aaron? Or would you just recommend that they watch a video?
No, gi- give give me the question again. Sorry, I was trying to answer another question in Slack and I got distracted.
Oh, okay. Um Prohempers was asking if he can do a quick explain like I'm five explanation for the liquidity pool.
Sure, I can try. This is always a good test of whether I actually fucking understand this stuff. So um entering a liquidity pool and I'm going to be using like the V two, right? Uni swap V three adds a lot of complexity because you're getting NFTs and all this weird stuff, which is very cool. But again, I'm going to use kind of the standard Dex uni swap V two model, um which is what sushi swap and quick swap and and balancer all are. Um so let's just say it's uh RBW USDC. Right? When you go to add liquidity and become a liquidity provider, uh you would have to put an equal amount of value on either side. So for example, five hundred dollars of USDC and then five, in this case, five hundred divided by a dollar fifty or whatever the exact price for RBW at the time is, right? And that would be the quantity of RBW put in on uh one side and then the five hundred dollars or five hundred USDC that you would put in on the other side. The pool then takes your ERC twenty tokens and gives you an ERC twenty token back, which is called an LP token, liquidity provider token. Um that token basically represents your pro rata share of the total pool, right? So if there's ten thousand in liquidity in the pool and you give a thousand dollars worth of uh liquidity to the pool, you're basically one tenth of the pool. And so your LP tokens earn uh fees uh over that period of time. So if you're ten percent of the pool, you would get roughly ten percent of the fees uh which everyone pays fees as they trade in and out of the pool, right? I have USDC, I want RBW. You get a certain amount of RBW back, less the fees and and less things like slippage um. Our system will allow you to take your LP token, your ERC twenty tokens that you got for providing liquidity in the pool and stake them like you stake your RBW today. And you'll get a um uh an accounting token. It won't be SRBW, it'll be something else. We can just call it S RBWLp or something. Um and that will represent how much you've uh of your LP tokens that you've staked in our dashboard, right? And will be the basis by which you receive and claim um RBW rewards over time. And then at the very end, when you're done, right? Let's say you stake for six months. After six months, your LP tokens are unlocked in our dashboard and you can take them back and you could re-stake them if you wanted to, or you can always go back to the liquidity pool, hand the liquidity pool your LP tokens and then get back the ERC twenty tokens. But the thing to really wrap your head around that's very important is the idea that over that period of time, in this case, six months, you're not necessarily going to get, if you remember, we put in five hundred bucks worth of RBW, right? So whatever, five hundred divided by one point five, whatever that is, and then five hundred dollars worth of USDC. If RBW has doubled in price over that period of time, you're going to get more than five hundred dollars worth of USDC back. And you'll actually get less than the quantity of RBW tokens that you put in. And that's just the reality of providing liquidity. So the simple way to think about it is over whatever period of time, you're going to earn more of the asset that performs the worst over that period of time, right? So if RBW runs up fifty percent in six months, right, you will have more USDC than you originally put in and you'll have a little bit less RBW, right? Um and they call that impermanent loss because had you just held your RBW, you'd be up fifty percent, right? And instead, what really happened is the RBW went up twenty-five percent is really what that looks like, and you did get more USDC um. So it's a very strange thing. They call it impermanent loss. It's really only impermanent loss while you're holding your LP tokens and it becomes permanent when you cash them back in for your ERC twenty tokens um. So it's very interesting to think through. It's hard to explain it to a five-year-old. I probably did a really a really poor job of doing that right there. Um but again, I think the key things to remember are over the period of time, you get more of the worst performing asset and you mitigate that risk by getting rewards on top of it as well as the fees. I mean, we've been seeing pretty decent five to ten percent APR on the RBW USDC pool on balancer. Um obviously, the majority of that liquidity has been provided by the treasury, so the treasury actually holds those LP tokens. And over time, of course, as we pull out, we'll earn those fees. And I actually really like that because that becomes a passive income vehicle for our collective treasury, uh which is very cool. So I hope that was helpful. I'm happy to answer follow-on questions or dive, you know, more into the weeds if needed.
Alright, that made sense for me. Yeah, that was a pretty good explanation. We have uh Mo Mon. Hey.
Hi, um so I just had a question about the lock period of time lock. Uh I just wonder if this would run into a problem of um, you know, from the time that you start this, that three months or six months, there's a a massive pullout of liquidity pool from all the people that locked it for certain periods of time. Is that something that you worry about or you don't think that's an issue?
You're talking about in the case where, you know, most people lock up for six months and then what happens uh uh six month and a day in?
Right, exactly. And then if if the prices have gone down or if there's a bigger impermanent loss that they expect to happen, then everyone wants to pull out at the same time. Uh because everyone's unlocking at the same time, right? That there's a risk of that happening all at once.
I mean, that's a risk in every LP strategy, period.
Right, but if there's locking, then people would do that over time, right? But now they're waiting for six months before they, like if they're wanting to unlock, but they can, um so then they're waiting for six months to pull out and then it's.
Not having the time lock means you can dump at any moment. And you could also exit to whatever token out of that pool you really want via Zap, right? And so I would argue that there's higher risk in the event that price movement isn't looking great. Um and that like, why would an LP sit and and deal with impermanent loss? When they have the ability to exit at any time. So you're right, they they sit on it and they don't have this ability to um exit. And so again, it's, are the rewards valuable enough? Are the fees valuable enough to counteract that risk? And I would argue that it's more on us to ensure the economy is sustainable. There's plenty of utility for these tokens. People are having fun in our game, enjoying the shit out of the experience. And that is the stronger way to ensure um, you know, liquidity providers don't just hardcore exit after, you know, a period of six, you know, nine months or whatever. Um you know, it is a, it is a potential risk, but it's the equivalent risk that we all take and, you know, in in staking RBW single side. So um I would hesitate to try and come up with some token economic scheme that um you know, versus again, just focusing on, you know, more utility, more fun in the game, more people coming in, everybody in the world talking about it, like that's the way to sustainability versus just trying to think of some clever locking or unlock mechanism, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, that makes sense.
Cool.
Thank you.
I mean, there's certainly be something to watch for, and there are potential mitigants to it. You know, we might do a there might be another reward program that comes out, right? That that goes with like number of sequential months, providing liquidity or something cool there that would help. So um yeah, that's definitely something that we'll continue to think about. Definitely don't want to seem like I'm brushing that one under the rug. Something to think about for sure.
Okay, thank you so much, Mo Mon. Next up, we have Swiss. By the way, as a time check, we have six minutes left, so we'll be taking this and one other person and that should be the end. Uh hey, Swiss.
Alright, guys. I I just want to summarize what I understood from this session and Aaron, if you could please correct me if there's something majorly wrong. So I think the most important issue, number one, is that we have two investment options that are kind of competing for the same amount of capital that is potentially available after some time in the game. You could either stake it one-sided and um earn rewards this way, or you can choose the other option to provide liquidity and get rewards in that way. So these two kind of compete for the same audience and we'll have to make sure that um we understand what the individual risks and advantages are and then so everyone can make their own decision on on that investment. So that's component number one. Component number two is um and the component number two is that um it depending on how the overall market moves and we can not possibly know where it's going to go, we can just potentially estimate what we believe. If we um use one currency pair versus versus the other pair, you could have potentially completely different outcomes. So let's say if you have the USDC versus the token pair, you might actually underperform the market because you're locked in a position that you cannot get out. And you're not benefiting from the Ethereum going up in price. Um but if you would have the other token pair available to you, you would have a different effect. And people need to understand what the difference is and align themselves based on their expectation of the marketplace. But the topics are so complex, it's probably really, really important to kind of get this conversation going and I I imagine this is why you have this session with us. And maybe a lot. And the last comment is if we divide the pools in three or four different pools, I mean, in theory, we could use aggregators that will combine those pools based on availability and um so I think maybe this is a way to circumvent that. Um alright, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Swiss. I mean, you summed it up. I I there's no red flags based on, you know, what you said. Um and you called out the really important things to consider, which are, you know, one pool versus multiple. Uh you said something there at the end that is very important is that, you know, leveraging aggregators like One Inch kind of gets around the concern that I had around splitting our liquidity um, you know, into two pools versus one. Because you're right, you know, it will be able to run through and route the trade to uh, you know, achieve the the intended outcome, which is the lowest slippage um, you know, you can find. So that's an advantage there. And then the idea of um treating all LP tokens within our staking dashboard is kind of equal and then you're pro rata to that pool. So it's not going to necessarily advantage or disadvantage any of the individual pools um. You know, as a way to, I think, make the rewards fair. But yes, the the crux of, you know, do you want to take the RBW USDC pair? Or do you want to take the RBW wrapped ETH pair? And, you know, one of them is going to um again, wrapped ETH is going to expose you to price movement on that side. If RBW really runs up over the next year or so, um you know, relative to ETH, you're earning more of that. You're earning more quantity of wrapped ETH over that period of time. Like, that's very interesting. With RBW and USDC, you know, one side isn't going to move, really shouldn't move. And the other side is going to move. And the question is, you know, do you tolerate the you know, the impermanent loss of those, you know, of those pools? And I think it's just going to come down to player preference and, you know, what risks you want to take and what assets you would rather, you know, you would rather hold. Um so I know that was a nice summary of everything, Swiss. I didn't detect anything that you missed on that front. And I think as we've stated, we'll follow up with a couple of polls over the course of this week and next to just continue to try and get some feedback from the community as we finalize the structuring of these programs. And of course, again, none of this is set in stone. If we want to make changes, um I mean, that's why we're getting governance out the door so quickly is to allow a platform and a process for uh formalizing proposals, getting them up for vote and then obviously acting upon them. So um if there's groups within the community that feel very strongly one way or the other, uh and, you know, we ultimately feel there's a need for a change, I'm I'd be more than happy to make those changes based on the community sentiment.
Alright, that wraps up our liquidity work session. Alright, that wraps up our liquidity work session. How do you feel about this event, Aaron?
It's been fun. Um, I appreciate everyone who kind of came up and, and, and gave us some, some feedback. Again, uh, rather than just try to dump a program at everybody's feet, I really wanted to solicit feedback. Um, liquidity mining, yield farming, all this kind of stuff is, uh. It's not easy and I want people to understand as best as possible what they're getting into. What the risk and potential rewards are and hopefully get to a point where we all feel. Um, you know, really good about the program that, that's coming forward. So yeah, I'm super happy with how this one went. I'm excited for. More feedback and questions hopefully, um, on the AMA on Thursday. And again, we'll get a couple of polls out as well that I think will help do a sentiment check, um, in, in a good way.
Alright, so thank you so much for everybody's time and effort. We appreciate you, Unicorn fam. We'll post a summary on the topic at hand so we can share information with the community. If you have non-liquidity related questions or even liquidity related questions, please look forward to our third weekly AMA. Plus in forty-eight hours from now. We'll post a recording of this in our socials if you would like to give it a re-listen. Don't forget to share this with your friends and fellow Unicorn fam who couldn't make it. And if you have more burning questions or suggestions regarding liquidity, feel free to reach out on the Ask the Devs channel. So this has been Sparkly Unicorn with Stealthy, Witty and Zelous Unicorns. And last but not least, Aaron Baishmidt, CEO and co-founder of Crypto Unicorns. Good morning and good night, Unicorn fam. See you in a couple of days.